Yeah, good afternoon everybody and welcome to the meeting of the Finance Subcommittee. Apologies first and foremost for the late start. Excuse me, I'll get my breath back. The meeting today is open to the public, however, Appendix 1 up to the report item 14 on the agenda, appendices A and C to the report item 15 on the agenda, and the reports and appendices to item 16 on the agenda are not available to the public or press because they contain exempt information relating to financial and business affairs, and information in respect of which a claim to legal professional privilege could be maintained in legal proceedings. If members wish to discuss the information in these documents, we'll need to ask the members of the public and press to kind of leave for that part of the meeting, and we will pause the webcast. We've received no questions or petitions from the public, and can I ask that all mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. And for the benefit of the webcast, we'll ask each Finance Subcommittee member in turn to introduce themselves. I'll start, I'm councillor Brian Lodge, Member for Burghley Ward and co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee. Douglas?
Yes, councillor Douglas Johnson, Green Party Member for City Ward, and substituting today for councillor Marianne Elliot.
Maril Fraf, councillor for Netherdredge and Sharrow, and spokesperson for this committee.
Councillor Jordan, councillor for Dornetown.
Councillor Mike Leavry, Member for West Ecclesfield and Vice Chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Mike Chaplin, Labour councillor for Southie Ward.
Mary Lee, councillor for Darnall Ward.
Sahira Nas, councillor for the Darnall Ward.
Thank you, and officers?
David Hollis, interim director of Legal and Governance.
Rachel Appleyard, Democratic Services.
And Craig?
Craig Rochison, Democratic Services.
Thank you. Apologies for absence.
Yes, Chair, we've got apologies from councillors Marianne Elliot and Shafak Mohammed.
Thank you. And then item three is exclusion of press and public as above. The appendix one to the report on item 14, and appendix eight to see the report on the appendices to item 16 are not available to the public or press. So if members of the committee wish to ask questions around those, then we'll have to wait until we pause the webcast. And it may be that the final item on the agenda, item 16, if there are questions, it is a closed report in there, so we will start the webcast again just when we make the final decision in there. Thank you. So, any declarations of interest? If any members wish to declare an interest in items of business on the agenda? No? Thank you. So, page 11 of the agenda in the minutes of the previous meeting. Do members see this as a correct record? Can we approve those as correct record? Thank you. Item six, we've no public questions or petitions, so we go straight to item seven, which is Budget Monitoring and Financial Position for Month 10. I think it's Jane and Damien. If you'd like to introduce yourselves for the members of the public watching on the webcast. Thank you.
Hi there, it's Jane Willby, Head of Accounting. So the paper that you've got is to bring the committee up to date with the council's general fund, HRA, and capital programme outturn position. It's a standing item. The last update the committee had was in February, reporting the month nine numbers, which was December. This is the month 10 update, which is the January 23 forecast position. The first section talks about the council, and then split by portfolio, and then the committee separately. So at month 10, the council's forecasting an overspend position of £10.8 million, which was better than the previous month by £4.4 million, which is 15.2 overspend at month nine. The main improvements were in corporate and adult social care, with some underspends across other portfolios. It's worth noting that the improvements were largely due to one-off income that have mitigated the slippage on the BIPs, where the council has been able to benefit from additional income. The improvement in the 22/23 outturn has strengthened the risk reserve. So we've talked about the £70 million contingency that we started in 21/22 with to cover budget delivery risk. So given the current outturn, we expect £24.5 remaining million to go into 23/24. So the main areas for the general fund overspend are in social care, so £8.8 million in adults and £6.8 in children's. The reasons for the overspend, generally due to the shortfalls in delivering savings. There's also concern in the HRA with an overspend of £13.2 million. So in the Strategy and Resources Committee, it's improved by £2 million, with £1.4 million underspent at month 10. The reasons for the improvement has been due to the allocation of the business rate levy surplus, which is announced by government, so it's part of the overall £100 million pot, and we got a share of £1.2 million. There was a further £800,000 in interest rate income. This is mainly due to a large payment that we're scheduled to make that's slipped, which has left us leaving, holding larger cash balances, so we've had higher returns on the rates this month. The overspend in that committee, again, are about business change and legal, the delivery of the savings targets in those areas, with the issue in electric works ongoing, but the work to sort of release the restrictions on letting policy and change the floor plate to increase market attractiveness is underway. It also notes the slippage in the LAC spend, which should be carried forward and spent according to the plans that were approved in January at each of the LAC committees. Adult social care is £8.8 million over, and so this is one of the headlines really. One of the best improvements in the month has been £1.6 million. So this was the winter discharge funding that we got from government in December. So the team have been working really hard over the last couple of months to sort of look at the eligibility of the spend against that grant. So we've been working with the ICB to clarify that position for the eligibility for that funding, so we had £1.6 million extra in month to improve the position. The BIP shortfall remains a challenge. There's an £8.8 million slippage that's forecast into 23/24, and we've got concerns in the purchasing budget, particularly around learning disabilities, which is £7.1 million over budget. We are seeing some improvement in the cost of care packages, so in terms of the average cost of new care packages, that's coming down, and we're seeing that at the lowest cost on average since pre-pandemic, even accounting for an hourly uplift. So I think it's worth saying that a sustained average cost reduction is a positive step towards financial sustainability, but we do have a way to go when sort of looking at the older care packages that are in place, the high-cost packages. In education, children and families, the overspend is at £6.8 million, which is worse by £0.2 million, so there's been a further adverse movement on SEN transport, which is a particular area of concern and needs to be focused for next year. The main issues in there, again, are the BIPs, the residential strategy, capacity on Aldine House, health savings, and overspend in children's residential services, placements, short breaks and direct payments. In the housing committee, the general fund is underspent by £0.6 million due to improved recovery from temporary accommodation costs, but the HRA is overspent by £13.1 million, which has worsened by £0.4 million this month, again, due to extra costs in the housing repairs and maintenance service. Main issues in there are shortfall of rent of £3 million against budget, council tax, £1.2 million extra being paid for on empty properties for council tax, backlog of the repair jobs leading to disrepair claims of £2.4 million, overspend in HRM of £9.4 million. It's worth saying that HRM are working hard to address the backlog. They've increased compliance rates in gas servicing, reducing the waiting lists on voids, and re-letting time is reduced over the past nine months, but it will be a challenge to sustain the performance into 23/24 without overspending. The other committees, so in Transport, Regen and Climate, that's £0.6 under, so generally that's due to income above forecast and some vacancies held within the service. Economic Development and Skills is £0.2 under, there's no real concerns in that committee. Similarly, the Waste and Street Scene is £0.4 million under, on a net budget of £55 million, it's a fairly small variance. Communities, Parks and Leisure, this one's also moved this month by £1.5 million underspent. So the position improved by a million this month because we had additional income in parks and bereavement services, and we've also declared an underspend in youth services by £740k. And that has been requested to be carried forward into 23/24, and Strategy and Leadership Board will consider the proposals following the close of the accounts and the final outturn position in line with the strategic priorities of the council. That's everything in the revenue outturn and the HRA outturn position. The appendix shows the capital monitoring position and the sort of statement of the budget movement on the programme, top 20 projects, year-to-date outturn, slippage and overspend. And Damien's here to answer any questions that you might have on the capital programme. Thank you.
Thank you. Any quick, Mike?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to see that adult health and social care continue their improvement. Concerned to see that children's is not moving, in fact hasn't moved all year from its overspend that it's currently on. I suppose the new strategic directors are going to have to hit around running with this one. But also just to remind the committee that there was £14.8 million reserves went into this budget. So in real terms, we're still well over £20 million overspent in actual delivering what we do. So that's the very first point we've got to make about next year in getting in control of these finances. Another point, I want to raise is on HRA. We mentioned the fact that the current rate in vacant property is 3.4%, that hasn't moved all year. The target is 1.5. I'm at a loss as to why next year's target is 2.5, in other words, 800 homes less available to go out there for rent and income, which we're going to lose as a result of not dropping the target out of what we need this year, so I'm interested to know why that can't be achieved. But other than that, it's a good picture, but it's just as challenging next year's as this. Thank you, Chair.
Mike, the other Mike, councillor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I'm in agreement with the last comments from councillor Leavry there, that it's good to see that the budget is at least going in the right direction, but there are a lot of challenges ahead, and it is going to be difficult. It did come as a surprise to me, because I don't sit on the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee, that the youth service budget is so heavily underspent. But I do know from the ward that I represent that there is only one, I've been informed that there's only one session a week being delivered in Southie Ward, but given the sum here, it suggests that other wards are also being underserved, when there was a commitment to provide at least three council-funded sessions a week in each ward across the city. But I appreciate, Jane, that you might not be the best person to answer that question.
So youth services have gone, they've done quite a big restructure this year, and I think there's been quite a delay in recruitment to a lot of posts and a delay to delivery of services, which has led to some of the underspend. The service is proposing to bid towards the Youth Investment Fund, and that's what they want to use the funding to carry forward into next year to do. So the underspend is kind of a one-off thing, and all the posts that the underspend relates to will be recruited to and sort of that full complement for next year. But the underspend, again, has to be reviewed on the whole really, in line with the overall council priorities. And I think it's only just come out because they were forecasting to be spending it towards the end of the year, and it's just kind of come to light really that we need to sort of, you know, declare all these underspends and sort of, and view them as a whole really, rather than in individual services.
Councillor Lee.
Yeah, I just wondered who's got oversight of the budget then, if we've suddenly just come to light now about youth services underspending. I know they've been doing a recruitment drive, and I know that it's difficult to recruit sometimes for qualified youth workers, and we want to improve the quality of our youth workers and putting them through extra training. But how come nobody has picked this up politically before now?
So the finance service, we kind of work with the services, a self-service sort of model that we lead in terms of the forecasting. So the service managers will input the forecasts, and the finance service kind of work with them and support them, challenge the numbers. And we have been challenging this throughout the year, and we have made the comments that actually there is an underspend that they've kind of been forecasting to budget, even though there's been a bit of a risk that they wouldn't spend it. So it has been known about, but the service has chosen to forecast that expenditure at the level of the budget.
And was the Chair and Vice Chair of the Communities Committee aware that this was happening? Have they had political oversight of this? That was the question, do you know, are you able to answer that one?
It has been, sorry, it has been noted in the papers that they've been given that there's been an underspend that's been forecast to be spent.
Yeah, has that been throughout the year?
I think it's probably come to light midway through the year, about month six.
Oh, they didn't know about, they didn't know, okay. So nobody picked it up in that committee before now? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other questions or comments? No, I'd just comment, I mean, we are, as today we're talking about month 10, but we saw the flash report for month 11, which has shown an improvement in the position for the council again as it goes through, so that's good to see. And I think it's thanks really to the hard work that's been put in by everybody that are monitoring the budgets this year and working through, that we are seeing an improvement in the position from the start of the year and coming through. And, you know, hopefully we can manage the this year's budget, the work that's gone into it more, sorry, next year's budget, so we're not facing such a huge overspend at the start, and we monitor it going through. So thank you, officers, thank you everybody for the work that's been put in there and through. And Damien, you've dodged it again. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item eight, the local authority domestic abuse duty, 2023 to 24, 24 to 25, funding allocation for Sheffield. Sam Martin presented, if you just want to introduce us all, Sam.
Chair, why have we missed out on capital?
It was part of the, it was part of the overall. As Jane, when she introduced it, she said that Damien was there to answer questions on capital, but nobody answered, nobody indicated. Has Damien gone now? She did say when she presented the report that Damien was there to answer questions on capital, but nobody indicated.
I just thought he would give a presentation, that's all.
No, I'm afraid he's left now. If you do have questions, I'm sure if you want to put them to Damien, we can put them through, and we can get the responses out to him, we're in the committee as well. Thanks, sorry, Sam, if you want to introduce yourself.
Thanks, Chair, afternoon committee. I'm Sam Martin, I'm Head of Commissioning for Honourable People and Community Services in the Integrated Commissioning and Public Health Team. I've got the two next items on the agenda at mine to present, Chair. So the first one is around the Domestic Abuse Act funding, so a little bit of background to the paper for the committee. In 2021, the government published a new Domestic Abuse Act, and with that came some new responsibilities for councils around support for people in safe accommodation fleeing domestic abuse. With that act, and with those burdens, additional burdens, came some indication of some funding from government to support the council, doing some of the extra things that we needed to do. And initially, we had two years' worth of allocations of that funding. They indicated that there would be further funding beyond those years, but they didn't give us an indication of the amount at that point. So, back in the days of the cooperative executive, pre-committee days, the strategy, the commissioning strategy around the safe accommodation aspects of the Domestic Abuse Act was set out and agreed, and we've commissioned services on that basis. And then we've recently had the allocations from Dlook of the annual allocations for the extra funding for this year, for 2023 and for 2024/25, so the next two years' worth of funding has come through. So in line with the council's standing orders and regulations, we're bringing the paper to note as a committee that they're the allocations for the funding, and that we're going to continue to spend that funding on the services and initiatives that we commissioned initially back in, started in 2021/22. The paper sets out the, in brief, reiterates the services that we've commissioned with that extra funding, which does include our Women's Refuge, which we recommissioned last year, and also dispersed safe accommodation, which is all over the city, and that's for people that can't necessarily go into a block refuge provision. There's also a lot of support and therapeutic support for adults and children who are living in safe accommodation, and additional advice and guidance, and other schemes like target hardening schemes, so, you know, people are living in their own home, getting stuff like CCTV, extra locks on the doors and those kind of things. So the funding helps us deliver those additional duties. It's worth me noting, I guess, for the Finance Committee, that the council already spends over a million pounds of its own cash limit funded on domestic abuse services, including the community services. The additional money has helped us with particularly the accommodation-based side of the provision that we commission as part of our strategy. So happy to take any comments or questions on that, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Just a comment really, it's about over the last 10 years, the money that's been taken from Sheffield and the money we've had to save, and now we're getting it back in dribs and rabs from the government. We're very welcome, it's very welcome, and we're able to support these services, which we would have supported anyway, and a lot of this work would have been, and funding would have been given to these services over the years if we'd kept our funding in Sheffield. It's just a shame that it's coming back, piece by piece, or some of it is anyway. Not all of it, no doubt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions or comments? No? The report has four recommendations that are there, and we all agree with the recommendations? Yeah, sure, Chair, okay, that's been passed unanimously. So we move on to the second report in the supplementary agenda, it's page 35, Supporting People Through the Cost of Living via Citizens Advice Sheffield Against Sam, if you want to present now.
Thanks again, Chair. Yeah, so this paper is asking for the approval to spend some money which comes from the current public health reserve, and it's in support of the council's strategy around supporting people around the cost of living crisis. What we're proposing here, Chair, is that we give £300,000 of non-recurrent funding from that budget to support some expansion of the work that the Citizens Advice Sheffield are doing. We already, through our grant aid programme, as councillors will probably be aware, give a grant to the Citizens Advice Sheffield. And what we're proposing with this additional one-off bit of funding is that they can do some additional work in the next year or two, both to recruit additional volunteers, which is an area of their work that's really dropped off by Covid, so a number of people volunteering really dropped off, and they don't have a volunteer coordinator, so what we've suggested is that they invest in recruiting new volunteers to, if you like, get their workforce back up to full capacity, and to do some training packages with other community organisations and services that are in Sheffield and where people might go for help, particularly around cost of living type problems. Obviously, Citizens Advice Sheffield is considered to be, along with a couple of organisations, a specialist advice service, but there are lots of organisations that people go to for help who could give basic level advice around things like benefits, things like gas and electric bills and that kind of thing. So the idea is that we, by giving some of this one-off funding, we can increase the capacity in the system to provide basic advice to people that might need it, and then provide a route through for people to Citizens Advice where they do need some more specialist help and advice. So one of the other things that we're really conscious of is that there have been some conversations about the fact that Citizens Advice aren't doing as much face-to-face work in communities. I think it's fair to say that that's probably not quite the case, there still are 27 venues where they are providing face-to-face advice to people of Sheffield. What they have done is, particularly started off with Covid, but they've closed some of their buildings that they were more permanently based in, so a lot of the stuff that they do now is still face-to-face, but it's less visible in communities, because they haven't got an old building, you know, that they work from that says Citizens Advice on the door that they're working from anymore. And 95% of the work that they do on the phone and online is resolved on that first appointment. So I think we're really conscious that there's a balance to be struck between doing face-to-face work, which is quite labour-intensive and takes a lot of time, with the need to see as many people as possible, and some of that can be done best on the phone and online. But what we do want is for some of this additional funding to allow them to be able to provide more targeted face-to-face work in some communities where we think there are some gaps growing, particularly in black and minority ethnic communities and some particular populations. So they've been really keen to do that, and some of the extra funds will allow them to do some of that, and put things like online access points into places like our libraries where you can go in and have an online meeting with an advisor from a particular venue. So there's a bunch of things in there that we're asking them to do with that additional funding. I'm, yeah, happy to take some questions or comments now.
Thank you, Sam. Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, you mentioned it just after I put my hand up, that I was going to raise face-to-face appointments. I welcome the, obviously, the measures in the paper that will fund extra face-to-face. I mean, and I appreciate that. I mean, the question is, not just face-to-face, but a drop-in basis whether that can be offered, and whether offering a drop-in service is actually the way that the people who might need it most, I suppose is the way to put it, might actually be more likely to come forward on a drop-in basis rather than making appointments. I don't know if there's evidence to back that up, or evidence going the other way, but I don't know if you have, you know, if you have a handle on that. But, you know, my expectation is that it would be even more useful if we could offer a drop-in service, and like you say, a visible service in a building with a sign on it, because otherwise, how do you know, how do you know that help is available? I mean, that's the question, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a really good point, and it's something we've been talking through with the CEO of Citizens Advice, about how they, and particularly if we're giving them more money, how some of their delivery needs to change to take account of that in light of what we expect as a council. It is a grant, it's not a contract that we give to Citizens Advice, but I guess with that, there are some expectations about what we'd like to see. And I think there is a genuine trade-off between a drop-in service, which might not always be really busy, and then you've got a worker who might be a paid worker or two, sat, you know, with nothing to do, waiting for people to turn up, versus getting that message out to... So they do a lot of work through food banks at the moment, so people might turn up at the food bank, and they have a face-to-face worker there in the food bank. And I think their view is that that's a good way of getting to people that really do need it, need that face-to-face stuff most. But it's a bit of a trade-off, and I don't think it's an exact science. So I think the evidence that the phone work, most of the stuff that they do, goes to get dealt with on the first call, is good evidence that phone work can work, but we also acknowledge that there are some communities where that's not going to be suitable, you know, for access reasons, or language, or accessibility. And so we're really keen that they have a better look at that, and whether it looks like there are gaps, they're able to plug some of those gaps with face-to-face provision. So we'll keep an eye on it with them, we do monitor it quite carefully.
Okay, Joe. Councillor Lee.
Sorry, I just wanted to say I'm really pleased that they're going to get this round, because they do a fantastic job, and they're seeing far, far more people than they've ever seen. But a lot of that is, as you said before, it's a one-off, it's one telephone call, and you've got the advice that you need, and it's the people that maybe English isn't the first language, and they get frustrated at the first attempt, and give up, and it could go, then their issues can go on for months and months before they get them sorted. So I hope they can focus in on those people, even if it means making an appointment in a face-to-face setting for further appointments, you know, a few days later or a week later, to really get into the depth of the problem, I think that's really important. And there are areas in the city where that work is needed much more than in thinness and others, although, you know, lots of people would prefer, with serious problems, complex problems, need that face-to-face work.
I should come back on that, because I think I'd agree with that, Mary, and the CEO of Citizens Advice Sheffield, Sylvia, has been at a couple of meetings this last couple of weeks, met with communities chairs, community committee chairs, and also met with LAC chairs this week, so I think she's hearing that message loud and clear from various quarters in terms of councillor input, so it's really helpful for us to kind of add to that.
Councillor Nas.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you for the presentation. I also welcome extra funding going into the Citizens Advice Bureau. I also welcome extra funding going into the Citizens Advice Bureau. I just want to echo what my colleague Mary Lee just said. We represent one of the most diverse areas of Sheffield, the Donal Ward, and there have been issues around language barriers when people have been trying to contact the Citizens Advice Bureau. So I'd welcome recruitment, especially from people from Baying backgrounds. I really do like the idea of training going into, putting in place for volunteers in local community organisations because sometimes that is a first point of contact for a lot of people in our communities. I welcome advisers being placed at a food bank, I volunteer at a food bank, and a lot of the questions we get, we would benefit from having a advisor there. I know there is one in another food bank in my area, but a lot of the times, the face to face service that's currently being provided is for people to come in to make an appointment with an advisor, they do not get any advice on the day, and then they are sent to various locations. So that is one of the barriers for people in our ward. If there is going to be advisors in our area, then it'd benefit them if they were given advice, if they were given advice on the day rather than just being seen just to make an appointment. But apart from that, I do, I do welcome extra funding going into this and I'd really welcome the training for, and the recruitment of extra volunteers and training for local organisations in voluntary community phase sector in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, so thanks. First of all, yeah, welcome this, you know, it's absolutely what we should be doing. If we're serious about dealing with the cost of living, then putting more money into the frontline of people who actually sort out people's cost of living crisis is a very good thing. I was just going to say that in terms of face to face, I mean, certainly welcome that. I mean, one thing we've noticed with advice services over the years is how much they've changed from doing primarily face to face advice to much more that's online with the phone. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but there is a very much more demand for face to face advice. I think the one for us is it's important that we don't try and run someone else's service. So hence, it's a very good thing that this is formally a grant and Citizens Advice will sort out what they need to do with this, they know. And it's important that we don't conflate the huge demand on their services, we should just continual with, you know, choices that they make about, you know, where they put that resource. So there is that. And then the final point is that this is very definitely a grant for this financial, for a one off piece of money. And of course, what they need, because, you know, almost all their resource goes into ongoing costs, is to see if we can find any way over the next year to continue this amount of ground going in. So, you know, not suggesting any commitment to do that at this point in time, but if we possibly can, it's something we should definitely aim for. But yeah, good, very good to see this report. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions or comments?
No, just a brief comment. I think it's great that this money's been put in and I think it's right as recognised. I think everybody agrees with that blend of provision, whether it's online where people can, or through emails or things, or the face to face meetings or the telephone. And I think it's great that we can give them that support and they can then look through the, trying to build up the number of volunteers again. So I think it's good to do that.
The report has a recommendation at the top of page thirty six. Are we all in agreement with the recommendations? Yeah? Nobody in dissent? No? So that's agreed unanimously. So we'll move on to item ten, which is page forty five of the agenda, the Commissioner of Revenues, Benefits and Finance Systems. James MacGinn.
Hi. So the paper is about the current provision that we've got in place following the end of the Capita partnership in twenty twenty. We put some contractual provisions in place to make sure that we could still access some key systems that were previously provided under the partnership. These were the Capital One Revenues and Benefits System, Capital One Education, which will be talked about in a separate paper to come to committee, the Financial Management System and PAY three sixty. So the contractual arrangement is due to come to an end in twenty twenty five with the payment system slightly earlier in the same year. So to prepare for the end of the arrangement in twenty twenty five, the council would like to take individual commissioning decisions to separately procure external market suppliers to deliver the functions. So in preparation for expiry, we're doing quite a bit of market testing. We were taking advice from D Look and local partnerships to move to a position of separate contractual provisions and hopefully looking at staggered dates to do that. So in terms of financials, the current contract for each of those four systems is about seven hundred and twelve thousand annually. So the paper looks to, it's put an estimate in place of fourteen point three million over a ten year period as a general envelope, including a prudent forecast of implementation costs. So the paper really is about to approve the commission decision to individually procure contracts with one or more providers up to a period of ten years for the following systems, revenues and benefits systems, the finance system and the payment processing platform. Happy to take any questions on that.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? No? Oh, sorry. Councilor Leverie.
Just a comment, Chair. I mean, this makes evident sense actually to go out separately from these systems and have a phased implementation, so not trying to do everything at once, so it's the right thing to do.
Councilor Ruth, did you indicate you wanted to? No? Okay. Thank you. So the recommendation is at the top of page forty six, approve the commission of the systems, and we all in agreement with that? Yeah, nobody against that decision? That's carried unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to item eleven, page fifty one of the agenda, the Acceptance of City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement Revenue Grant. Matt's going to introduce this.
Afternoon, Chair. Afternoon, councillors. Matthew Rowntree for Transport Planning and Infrastructure. So the item presented in front of you today is the acceptance of two point eight million from the City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement Revenue Fund. The reason for presenting the item is obviously to accept the grant. It's come from South Yorkshire Combined Authority through the D F T to point for transport, and it's to help us deliver our substantial capital programme related to the City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement. This has been brought to the TRC Committee on the eighth of Feb and was mentioned at the Strategy and Resources Meeting last week on the fifteenth of March, whereby we outlined the kind of future review of transport and how all our future programmes will align to that. The money will be used to pay for the business case development essentially of the schemes outlined in section one point eight, but because it's revenue funding, it allows us some flexibility around some of the preparation work we do to support those business cases. So this is related policy work, it's also communications, data and evaluation. But most importantly, one of the big benefits that this scheme delivers is our ability to work up future programmes of work. So what normally happens when a bid like this, a substantial amount of money comes in, we have a very short period of time to respond and we have to basically start from scratch. This allows us to work up what we call a bottom drawer of schemes. So we have a repository of a number of different schemes with different criteria, which allows us to respond quickly to those bids with more surety and certainty around delivering the scheme within the funding timescales, which are often constrained. We will be the accountable body for the grant, so in the financial and legal implications, it's been detailed, all the funding conditions and terms and how we would abide by them as a local authority. The final thing, Chair, just to mention is that, this is quite an important point, any derived capital scheme which comes from this revenue funding basically can be capitalised and then the revenue reinvested back into the, back into the pot. So it's a regenerative grant agreement, which is fantastic news in terms of keeping the momentum going with transport delivery. So just to conclude, the recommendation is to approve the acceptance for the grants for the reasons outlined in the paper.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I just wanted to pick up on point one eight three on page fifty four about connecting the Northern General both to the city centre and to other areas. Up until last summer, we had a number thirty two bus route that worked out of the city centre and linked the four north eastern wards, Burngrieve, Shire Green and Brightside, Firth Park and Southey Ward. So I'm just wondering from this whether that would be to restore that route or a route that's similar to what we used to have.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Chaplin. So the scheme itself is to develop what we think would be a series of infrastructure improvements to enable a better public transport operation. This is currently at strategic outline business case stage, so it's really at a very, very high level. But in principle, what we're looking to do with that scheme is reintroduce connections back into the Northern General. That inevitably will involve working with the operator, which we've been able to do as part of this work. We're having proactive engagement with First and Stagecoach, as well as the MCA, to try to bring in that public transport kind of operational factor into the, into the final design of the scheme. What the revenue funding isn't for is for paying for bus services, that's something which isn't in there. So we can't use this to just basically put that bus back on. But obviously, we are discussing with, you know, the directors down at the MCA as well as Oliver Copard, about how we can use this capital investment to get the bus operators to reinvest within their, the operational elements that public transport would like putting those buses back on. So it's not specifically about putting specific buses on, but it's about providing priority and access into the northern communities from the city centre.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions or comments? No? Thank you very much. And, you know, I think you've had this that many times now, your final meeting for this Finance Committee, I understand. So thank you very much for the support and work that you've done in helping us there and best of luck with your future role. Not too much luck though, it's a neighbouring authority there. So we'll move on to item twelve, page eighty seven of the agenda, the Rural Estate Management Plan, and Tammy presenting this.
Hello, Tammy Whitaker, Head Regeneration and Property Services. The purpose of the report today is to bring forward the Rural Estate Management Plan that will govern how the council will effectively manage its rural estate. The council owns quite a substantial rural area of land, about three thousand hectares, including about fourteen equipped farms. These lie predominantly to the west of the city, mainly in the Peak District National Park or on the fringes of the Peak District National Park. And as such are subject to many designations, national park designations, sites of scientific And they're mainly upland farms or moorland. What we've, in the past, the council has managed its rural estate as a series of individual tenancies really, without an overarching strategy for how the rural estate will deliver wider outcomes for the city. And the Estate Management Plan attempts to provide a framework about how the rural estate can contribute to the broader outcomes of the city. The vision is to have a stronger integrated approach to land management to deliver a range of environmental and public benefits through collaboration and working with other landowners and adjoining landowners to manage the land at a landscape scale. And the report sets out a series of strategic objectives, predominantly around improving the land, using the land for low carbon renewable energy, public access, recreation and education, working in collaboration and partnership, and as I say, looking at integrated land management for environmental biodiversity benefits. The majority of land, as I said, is to the west of the city and it's intended to retain a core estate around the north west of the city around Bradfield and to the kind of south west of the city, which is land that's been gifted to the city as charitable land around Door, Ringing Low, Redmires and Lodge Moor on the Peak District National Park fringe. It's fair to say that our ability to directly influence what we do with the land is constrained. The majority, eighty one per cent of the land holding is on Agricultural Holding Act tenancies, which grant successive rights to tenant farmers. And the majority of our land, we will be unable to achieve vacant possession for in excess of ten years. So our approach is to work alongside our tenant farmers for broader environmental and biodiversity benefits. And we've had some success working with our partners, particularly Sheffield and Rotherham Wildlife Trust, the National Trust and the RSPB, who manage large areas of land that we own for broader environmental and biodiversity benefits. And the report sets out our kind of broader aims and how we will facilitate that work. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Councilor Otten.
Thanks, yeah, thanks for this report. I've just noticed the date on it was April twenty twenty two. I'm slightly curious as to what, how it's taken so long to reach us? And also, I suppose, what, in terms of if this was agreed, is that, is it a living document or is it set in stone or, you know, does it get reviewed?
Yeah, so the dating on it is April twenty 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 two, and the reason for that is that the agricultural policy at the moment is really fast changing. So we've had to set a kind of point in time with the agricultural policy because it's constantly evolving and constantly changing. So although the report's dated April twenty twenty two, that's because that's the information that's correct at that time in terms of policy, but that's going to be constantly updated. So it's going to be a living document and the agricultural policy at the moment is constantly evolving. So rather than constantly update this document, we've put a point in time, which is April twenty twenty two, but we will review it as policy becomes clearer.
Right, I'm still quite puzzled by that answer. So the document we've got was right in April.
The policy elements of the document.
Policy elements of the document were right.
Yeah.
But then, but in some respects, they're no longer right because it's fast changing.
It's fast changing, yes.
So what's wrong in there?
So it's on page, you can find the page, but there's a section in there that talks about the agricultural policy at the time, which I think is on page, there's a diagram somewhere, page twenty six. So if you see, it's a page one, two, one in your packs. So the nature of the environmental land management schemes are changing and evolving quickly. So until, so for example, the stuff around local nature recovery and some of the sustainable farming incentives and the landscape recovery programmes are all changing, the pilot projects are evolving. So rather than constantly update that page, we just needed a bit of certainty about what the actual schemes are and we'll provide further information at that point.
Okay, so we're getting updates, well, okay. We'll get updated on that as appropriate, which is fine. Which is not clear why it's taken us a year to receive this report. If we had it a year ago, it would have been right at the time that we had it, we'd have saved this last question.
Yeah, I mean, it's partly due to the fact that we've been speaking to stakeholders and consultees, making sure that we've got as much information in there as we can and then just resources in bringing this forward. We've also done quite a bit of work with our tenant farmers as well to understand their kind of maintenance requirements and some of the issues that are coming out with our tenant farmers. So there's been a constant kind of dialogue with our tenants and others.
Okay, okay, well, I'll accept that. I mean, you know, if things have moved on, I don't expect that to be in the covering report a little bit, that things have moved on a little bit. But anyway, I mean, I understand those answers, I'll accept that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chaplin.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the, for the report. It was, it was on page one, two, five or page thirty of the Capita Jonas Report. I'm just wondering, because I've seen various reports come through the Peak District National Park Authority, and I'm just wondering whether that core strategy for two thousand and eleven still holds and similarly with the Development Management Plan, because they seem to be updating theirs every few years as well.
Yeah, there have been, so the Development Management Policies of twenty nineteen, I've not seen any recent updates on that. I've not seen any recent updates on that particularly at this point in time. I know they're going through a review of their local plan at the moment as well.
Yeah.
We will update that as that comes forward, but I know we've had particular, they've got some resourcing issues, I think, within their planning team at the Peak District National Park, so we're trying to engage in dialogue with them, but it's quite challenging.
So they're not responding then? Yes, you're quite right, because they do, like a lot of councils, they're also finding that staff are going elsewhere, and the attractions of the park are not the only thing to keep them there. I am aware that they do have some officers that also deal with grants, and they do come up from time to time either to do with, well, to do with heritage and other things. And I do think it is important to keep in touch with them as and when they do come up, because it's often it's leverage funding, and if it's seventy five per cent or more, then I do think that's worth taking a look at and using to improve our capital programme as it applies to the rural estate.
Yeah, we're in, we do keep in constant dialogue with Peak District National Park and certainly have been involved in things like the management plan that they've developed. And we do keep an eye out on grants, and we have applied to DEFRA through our tenants, because it's the other thing we have to, it's our tenants that have to apply for grants, not the council, because they're tenant farms. But we have applied, we've looked at doing pilot demonstrator projects with DEFRA and various other things to improve environmental benefits, so we are constantly looking at that through our agents.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Leveray.
Thank you, Chair. Page one four six fifty one in the report about identified opportunities for potential development. On the urban sites identified, were they actually in the local plan in the consultation?
So in terms of the review, we've looked at whether any of the sites that we own that are in the rural estate, not our entire estate, but in the rural estate, were suitable for development. And I think, I don't think that we felt that they were, but I don't know as to whether they were put sites forward, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I don't think they were, apart from Rainhead Farm, might be the only one that was.
Okay, I'm just a bit concerned that we've just gone through a consultation process where land that we are looking at for development wasn't in it, potentially? That's my first question about, you know, we've just done a local plan consultation, we've shown all the sites, they've gone out of the public domain, the public have come back, and yet maybe these two sites which are, we're suggesting investigating, haven't been included?
No, they have, so we've looked at them. So when the call for sites came through for the local plan, we looked across the entire estate, and those, all the sites that were suitable for development were put forward to the Planning Authority and considered as part of the local plan consultation.
Have they been considered as consultation stand? Okay, thank you, that answered the question. The second bit about green belt is causing me some concern that we've identified sites for potential green belt development in the future and are proposing they're reviewed in further detail and costs involved with that. Now, bearing in mind that we've just approved the spatial option for next fifteen years, why is there a need to start looking at green belt land at this stage?
I don't propose that we take that forward. This is a recommendation that came out from the report that Carter Jonas did, but I don't propose that we would take that forward, given that the local plan consultation has run.
Is that in the recommendations in front, and that isn't going forward?
And the recommendations in the report? No, the recommendations in the front end report that sits alongside the Rural Estate Management Plan is that we adopt the Rural Estate Management Plan, there isn't a recommendation in the actions, we've got to develop, the next stage of this is develop an action plan off the back of this, we wouldn't put that forward as a recommended action in the action plan. So we will bring back to committee an action plan on the back of this report that sets out a series of proposals to deliver some of the recommendations, and we'll omit it from that because we've now undertaken the local plan consultation, so don't propose we rerun something that's been excluded through the local plan process. That make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense. I'm just wondering how we're approving a report which has got something in it which isn't recommended to be taken forward? Or why are we, why can't we send this report back and make a recommendation that goes with it and takes things out that we're not going to do? If you see what I mean?
Just trying to find, the report that you're talking about was one that was commissioned to look at, to use to develop options, was it?
So the local plan, the local plan process has happened, this document was developed in April twenty twenty two, and as I said, this is regularly updated. I don't propose that we do, the green belt considerations have been looked at through the local plan, and that's done. So I don't propose we reopen that as a recommendation. So I'm happy that we take that out of this report, I mean, we could note that as an action if that's what you want to do as part of the decision of the committee.
I think, Chair, bearing in mind that it mentioned in the report that the first major review was an opportunity to do this, I think really we should be asking for a review of this should the circumstances change, rather than put commitments in and then say we're not going to do it.
Councillor Orton.
Yeah, just on this, you know, I agree with councillor Leveray, I don't want to be approving this today if it has these words in it that we should be looking at developing these sites of the green belts. I think that would be a tremendous mistake. And I know the fact that we've been advised, and we all know full well that local plan has been done, isn't very much comfort when the wording explicitly says, yes, you know, the process, we've gone, we've got, you know, we're at some stage in the local plan process, but we suggest they're looked at with a view to the period beyond twenty thirty eight, which means after the period of local plan, with a view to the next local plan. Well, I mean, I think that's a mistake. I think that would send completely the wrong message to developers, it would make it harder for us to deliver on our goals on Brownfield Land. If we start reopening the door on green belt sites like this, despite what I thought we had was a agreement across the council that we weren't going to do that. So, and, you know, as far as I can see, we have a reporter in front of us that says we recommend adoption of the report in the appendix, which is the Carter Jonas report, and that has these words in it. So I, you know, I'll take advice from legal as to how we go about this, but I would like our decision today not to agree those words that talk about development of the green belts.
Can I just confirm that the recommendations are the recommendations that are set out on pages forty three, or one three eight through to one four five? So they're the kind of strategic objectives, the action points and recommendations. This is, the report has actually been to planning colleagues as well for comment on the local plan. They've provided the wording on the local plan.
I'm just looking through, seeing if there is, if there are references in there around the green belt.
On pages one three eight to one four five, which has got the action points and recommendations.
Okay, well, colleagues are looking, I think, councillor Johnson?
Yeah, thanks, yeah, sorry, I've got my puzzled face on too. So apologies first of all, because I'm something of fairly short notice, so I haven't read this in as much detail as it deserves, it looks like it's a substantial paper. I'm struggling a bit to see what are the implications of what we're being asked to approve today. And, I mean, my instinct is that there's a lot of interesting and important stuff in here, covering a very large area of the city and a significant amount of capital ownership of the city. And I wouldn't want to rush into supporting something like this unless there's a very good reason for it. And I just wonder whether there is a need to have this deferred so that it could be considered just a bit more reflectively. It's not that things jumping out at me, I'm thinking that's really bad, but there's a lot of implication in there, and I think I've got some, well, I can see that things could spring up to bite us, and the question is, I want to know what those are, and I suspect that no one can really tell me what they are today. But I'd rather know what's going to spring up to bite us before we make a decision to approve it, rather than many months afterwards. So that's my hesitation there. But just looking at the point on governance, so in short, what this looks like, this looks like a good report from Carter Jonas as professional experts to advise us as the council, but that doesn't automatically translate into policies that the council will own and adopt and manage itself. So they're a bit vague on what the council will actually do. So just, there's a line on the governance on page one five six, one five six at the bottom, and it says, it will be essential for the council to have appropriate delegation of some powers in place to enable them to make decisions within a realistic commercial timeframe, so as not to be disadvantaged. And I wouldn't disagree with that, but there's a lot of unknown quantities there, you know, so what's appropriate delegation? And when it says some powers, which powers? And we're talking about powers, we're talking about things where we've always got an element of policymaking discretion there. And it's in place to enable them, but, I mean, how is that enabled? And so it's a sensible thing for an organisation outside the council, say, you need to go and have a proper system and everything in place. It's just that I can't quite see how that translates to us actually having a system set up that meets all the, you know, I can't see how it's going to work as it hits the moment. So I suppose the worry is if we just approve this today, as councillors, we'll only find out about this when we find, you know, some, you know, bit of land somewhere has been put up for sale, and then people start kicking off about it. I wonder if it should have actually been consulted on publicly, because as Tammy's pointed out, we've had the report as the council since April last year, and understand that some of it would be out of date now, that's acceptable, but it's not been out to consultation. There's been some people with particular interests who've been involved, and as I know that Carter Jonas has been around for, I think, several years now, I think, might be correct on that, but it hasn't been consulted on publicly, and I just wonder whether we should do that at this point. Open to thoughts then?
I'm happy to come back on that. So as you know, rural estate management is a very specialist business, so, and we don't have rural estate managers within the council, so we employ Carter Jonas to advise us. In terms of policy formulation, we, at the time this was written, we didn't have an adopted disposal framework, we now do, which has been approved by this committee, and so I propose that the disposal framework will be similar, will be exactly the same, it will go through our existing disposal framework. So that's now set. And the governance for that is set through this finance committee. I think in terms of your point about public consultation, I did ask the committee members whether we should put this out to public consultation, and the advice was we'd had stakeholder engagement, so to bring this through to committee, which is what I've done. If you want to go out to public consultation, don't have a problem with that, but when I asked committee members that, it was advice that they didn't want to proceed with that.
I was just going to say, the other thing is, is that there was stakeholder engagement by Carter Jonas as well in preparing this. Just on the particular point that Douglas has raised about the delegations, making a recommendation that we have something doesn't implement that, it's just something, our delegations are our delegations, so that wouldn't undermine that. I was just trying to go through to look at the implications of the green belt stuff, and I, I've only skimmed through and I'm happy to have a closer look, but it doesn't seem to me to be saying that those are going to be development sites that we adopt, it's merely making a factual statement that they are potential development sites, and says that under our current planning policy, then they are not able to be brought forward. The fact that under a future planning, local plan, whatever that might be, they might be development sites is a statement of fact rather than a statement of policy that they should be developed in the future. But I'm happy to double check my reading on that, but that's my first reading of it.
Councillor Chaplin.
I mean, I can understand how this discussion has come about, and from the way I read the recommendation, it doesn't say that the, in adopting the Carter Jonas report, it doesn't say that the recommendations stop at page one four five. And I think that's possibly what's setting the hairs running for councillor Leveray. And I just wonder if there's a way that we could finesse that, so that it's, the recommendations that bit clearer?
Can I suggest then that we, in adopting this plan, that we focus on the ambition, the vision, the ambition, and the recommendations set out on page one three eight to one four five?
That to me is a lot, is very sensible, Chair. Thank you, Tammy.
There's been a suggestion there, are we happy to go with that and to note within the committee's decision that we're looking at the recommendations on one thirty eight to one forty five? Yeah, if we've got?
Sorry, just say that again, Brian. So, sorry, apologies, Chair, just repeat what you just said, sorry.
Yeah, there was a suggestion that within the, as, in the committee's decision, we note that we're looking at the recommendations on between pages one thirty eight to one forty five. The thing that's, the confusion is arising from the section that's identified opportunities for potential development from page one four six onwards, so we would make it clear that we're not including that as a, we're not adopting that as a recommendation, that is information that is there, that is not a recommendation within the plan. Is that, yeah, everybody happy with that? Can we? If that's, we can do that, can we?
Yeah, I think Tammy's making that as an amendment to a recommendation, that's fine. Because I think it doesn't start until page fifty one that you have the identified opportunities for potential development, and I've just double checked, and that's not referenced anywhere else other than as a standalone matter, so.
Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, so on the recommendation, where instead of referring to policies which set out a different part of the plan, are we just talking about the items onto the section headed strategic ambitions, objectives, action points and recommendations?
Yeah, I think that's what Tammy suggested.
Yeah, okay. So would you just be that wording, substitute policies for that heading there? Okay. The question is, does that work? Yeah, all right.
Everybody okay with that? Yeah? Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that amended wording, which I'm sure you've got down there for the minute, are we all in agreement with this? Yeah, can we show a show of hands? Yeah, nobody dissent? Okay, that's agreed unanimously, thank you very much. And we'll make sure that that's clear in the minutes. So item thirteen is the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority Grant Funding Agreements, page one hundred and sixty nine of the agenda, and Tammy, again.
Sorry, so this report is, the proposal is to accept some grant funding from the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority, around approximately seven million pounds to support two major private sector led regeneration projects at Attcliff Waterside and Westbar. The report seeks approval to accept the funding, subject to the final terms of the proposed funding agreements. Unfortunately, these have been last minute grants from the MCA, and therefore we haven't received the final versions of the grant agreements, but we expect that they will be on the similar terms to the majority of grant agreements we've received from SIMCA. We've received DAS, but not the final terms. The haste with this is that the funding needs to be released from the MCA to Sheffield City Council this financial year in order to not lose the grant. And the details of the two proposals are set out in the report. And the details of the two proposals are set out in the report. The first is for Attcliff Waterside, a large residential development site that's been in the ownership of three landowners, including a large proportion of land owed by the city council. And then also for funding towards the West Bar development, which is within the city centre. And the funding is to help resolve some viability, contamination and site remediation issues with both projects. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. councillor Orton.
Yeah, I appreciate it may be a bit late to ask this, but these projects that are, sound like city centre or on the edge of the city centre. Is the, has the funding been identified to do maintenance on kind of improved public realm that might be more costly to maintain than what was there before?
They're both private sector schemes, so they're not owned by the city council.
Okay, that's fine. I should have thought I better check because us in the waste and streets scene have had an issue with this. I thought we might have to have a little waste and streets scene call across the room for a moment. But no, okay, okay, I'll take that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions? councillor Johnson.
Just does one quick on, I'm fine with these schemes there. I mean, it's all about improving the public realm, isn't it, Tom, even though it's private sector stuff there? But it is partly to help the private sector businesses comply with planning conditions and so on. I just, so the only thing I wanted to ask is whether we've got a running record of the cumulative sums that each of these developers receives through, you know, the SIMCA council routes. Because I know with the West Bar one, there was some previous grants as developer for some of the stuff that will overlap with this. So I just want to make sure someone's keeping tabs on that.
Yeah, we do.
I thought you would, but it would be good, yeah, okay. I wonder if at some point we can probably get that reported back to the committee? Or suppose ideally it would be useful to have it in any future reports, say that the developers already had this amount? Just so that we're clear about the picture. Yeah.
Okay, any other further questions or comments? No? Sorry? Yeah. The recommendation at the top of page 160, 170. Are we all in agreement with the recommendation? Yeah, nobody disagreement? No, so that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 14, the Centre for Child Health Technology, page 179 of the agenda. Noting that appendix one is exempt. So if any member wishes to speak about issues on the exempt report, we will have to ask members of the press and public to leave and suspend the webcast. Tammy.
Yeah, so this is a report to enter into a lease for development of the National Centre for Child Health Technology in Attcliff. Committee may recall, this is part of our levelling up fund work in the Attcliff area. And the intention now is to enter into a lease for construction of the CCHT through a disposal of land, through a long lease for a term of 250 years and then a subsequent underlease to Sheffield Children's Hospital for fit out of the CCHT.
Thank you. Any questions on the open report? councillor Chaplin.
Yeah, I mean, it may not be for this committee, but has a presentation been done at another committee on what this child centre would be doing for young people in Sheffield?
There's been a presentation to the Transport and Regeneration Committee, which this falls under as part of the levelling up fund proposals.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions or comments on that? No, I think it's good news again for continuing the development down there at the Olympic Legacy Park. And it's a really good news story for the Sheffield Children's Hospital and things that are going on down there. So, you know, I welcome this coming through. We have the recommendation. Are we all in agreement? On that? Nobody against that? No. So that's agreed unanimously. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to item 15, the Essential Compliance and Maintenance Asset Management Plan, page 195 of the agenda. And again, noting that appendices A and C are exempt. And we have Tom Smith and Nathan Rogers to present. When you're ready, Jen, so if you just want to introduce yourselves just for the benefit of the webcast.
Thank you, Chair. Afternoon, everyone. I'm Tom Smith, director of direct services. Nathan?
Good afternoon. Nathan Rogers, head of facilities management.
Thank you. Tom, if you ought to introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair. So I'll just very briefly introduce this. So it's kind of important to say what the report is and what it isn't, I think, right up front. So we obviously came to this committee in November 2022 with a very clear laid out plan and programme of work to undertake a big strategic review of the council's accommodation and building assets across the piece. That piece of work is in train. And you all know, obviously, we've given updates. There's a lot of stuff in the public domain around how we're moving on the vacating of Morefoot and looking at, you know, reviewing some of our other building assets. So we've agreed that approach with this committee and that piece of work is progressing. It's clear, though, in the meantime, we have a backlog of maintenance across our buildings and a challenge in terms of making sure that what we've got whilst we do that review, until that review is complete, that we're actually managing it in the right way, that we're dealing with any issues in terms of condition and we're prioritising the way we deal with those issues in terms of condition. So what this report seeks to do is two things. It seeks to set out the clear way in which we will prioritise the limited budget we've got to mitigate any risks associated with our current buildings whilst we undertake that big strategic review. And then secondly, what it does is it fulfils a request that was made in November 2022 Finance Subcommittee to make sure that members of this committee have the detailed information that underpinned some of those estimates in terms of backlog maintenance and condition. So in effect, that's what the report is doing. I would just maybe just pull out a couple of other little bits just for some clarity. So we've talked a lot about a £200 million figure and we talked about that when we were in Finance Subcommittee last November. This report provides a breakdown of how we got to that £200 million. So just to very kind of, or try to set that out in a clear way. So you'll see under 1.14, there's a figure of 91.2 million pounds. That figure is effectively based on condition surveys of buildings and is an estimate of the work required to deal with any B, C or D category defects in those buildings. So that's 91 million pounds. And then the rest of the £200 million is made up from a number of other areas. So we estimate that this building, town hall that we sat in, needs something like 25 million pounds spending on it. We estimate that the Graves building needs something like 10 million. We think our depots probably need something approaching 35 million, albeit that that's not a net figure. So again, we need to be really cautious about some of these because if we can consolidate depots through the accommodation view, clearly it won't cost the totality of that. And then we've put a figure in around market volatility. Everyone will know where the market is in terms of building work at the moment and inflation pressures and everything else. And we've not finished the condition surveys. So whilst we prioritise the most important buildings, the really high use ones and the ones we would be most worried about, we still need to completely finish that work. So we've put a figure in of 39 million to cover that off. So that is where that £200 million figure comes from. What you've then got within your appendices is a breakdown by building of those figures, that 91 million pound figure. And it's broken down into two separate appendices. So you've got an appendix that shows the stuff that is B, C and D. And then you've got an appendix that shows the stuff that is D, which is the stuff that is, you know, the critical and essential stuff that we will be focused on initially. In terms of the prioritisation approach, I won't get into lots of detail about it. But just to say that, you know, we do have limited funding, we've talked about this a lot. What we have to do as a facilities management team is to decide where we best spend that first. And you'll see again under 1.22, the first thing we do is look at, you know, fire safety, mechanical services, electrical and roofs. The stuff that's really going to cause a problem if we don't deal with it quickly. And those areas will be prioritised. And then when we find those issues, we will put it against a kind of a scoring matrix in order to make sure that we prioritise that. And that is set out under 1.23 to 1.25. So that was really always going to say in terms of the paper. Lots and lots of detail in this, obviously. But I did just want to be really clear upfront, this isn't, you know, this isn't the solution to our issues around building maintenance. The solution to our issues around building maintenance is the accommodation strategic review, which we are following through, which will get us into a more sustainable position in terms of our building assets. This is simply the short term piece of work we're doing to make sure we prioritise the limited budget we've got in the right way. Chair, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Do you want to just explain the public appendix? Because for anybody who's looking at that, it will look a little bit strange. But probably explaining why it's in that format.
Of course, Chair, yeah. Sorry, that was remiss of me. So members have got the confidential appendix, appendices, I never say that. And you will know that for each building, you have got the estimated cost of the repair for each potential element in that building. So you will be able to look on that confidential appendix and you will see a building and it will say, there is roof work needs to be done. We estimate this is the cost of that roof work. That individual cost we've redacted for the public domain largely because, as I say, when we get to it, we will potentially have to contract that work out. And that would obviously, you know, affect our commercial confidentiality and potentially affect the best value the council can get in terms of any procurement. So the decision was taken, we need to adapt that. The headline figures are in the public domain though, so you can see for each area of Sheffield, north, south, east, west, et cetera, that we have given the headline figure on the total across the categories. So roofs, electrical, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully that explains that, Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? councillor Orton.
Thank you. So just pleading for something in my ward first as a comment. The Millpond at Aberdell Hamlet, I'm told, is leaking badly. And the wall is, you know, leaking through the wall onto the Hamlet site. And surmising from the appendices, I think that that is probably down as not a D. But I would suggest that it's, you know, if it carries on like that, it's going to do damage to other stuff that's on there. So please bear that in mind when scheduling. That's just a plea. The, I suppose the point is, and it's on 1.28 and it's, you alluded to it. It's really, the accommodation strategy is going to, is the real solution. I agree with that. But I mean, it's the way it's worded, the only option is either, you know, maybe, don't even dare breathe it, to increase funding to address future maintenance needs. I mean, surely, isn't it plainly obvious from this that we're going to have to do that? Even with an accommodation strategy, we're going to have to take money out of somewhere else out of the capital programme, put it into maintenance, isn't that? And wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be nice to have a paper before us? I mean, it's easy for me to say that without seeing what it might have to come out of, isn't it? So where, you know, where's the paper that says this is the capital project that would have to go? We were going to spend more on maintenance and members could make a decision because, you know, we've got to do the maintenance, haven't we?
So I would agree, councillor Orton. So within the accommodation view, there's several strands of work. And there are a number of strands of work that are actually about business cases for investment in certain buildings. So as a very clear example, this building, you know, it's not going anywhere. It needs a significant amount of money spent on it. But we need to put the business case together to show how we will, you know, how we would, what the options would be to fund the work that needs to take place here. Similarly with our depots, you know, we need depots, it's very clear about that. The depots we've currently got are not fit for purpose and need investment. So the piece of work we are currently running through is a business case to look at exactly that. Okay, how do we fund it? So you're absolutely right, councillor Orton. At the end of this, we will have to find a way to release a significant amount of capital expenditure to get ourselves in the right place. But there are obviously different ways we can do that through financial models in terms of, you know, things like the closure of Morefoot. Closure of Morefoot has the potential to yield something like two and a half million pounds a year. Clearly, in this financial year, that's identified as a saving on the bottom line to balance the books of the council. But in future years, it may well be that that saving can be used to fund capital works in other buildings, depending on the council's financial position. So we are working through those business cases, councillor Orton.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I look forward to those. And it's a general observation that this committee and strategic resources, I think applies to both, is that I've never yet had a paper which says, look, these are the two things you can spend the money on, you've got to choose between them. Which is, and if we never do that, if we only get papers for the proposal that, wherever it comes from, somebody in somewhere in the council thinks we ought to be spending money on, we're never really making the decision, are we? I don't know if that can be addressed, I don't know if there's a way of working as this committee that can address that or whether we're doomed to live in this world.
I think, Tom, you want to come back on it?
I mean, I don't necessarily have an answer to that. But I think one of the things I can take back out of this committee is that comment to say, okay, so when we get to the business case route, how are we going to set out the budget setting process? Because it needs to be part of that budget setting process, doesn't it? In terms of very clearly setting out the options in terms of expenditure, especially on capital. And saying, you know, well, exactly what you said, councillor Orton. Actually, you know, it's music to officers' ears really, is that thing about here are the choices and here are the difficult choices that we will have to make. Because if we look back on the history of this, we've made difficult choices. The difficult choices have been not to invest. We've kept services going and not invested in buildings. And that might have been the right decision, but we need to set those options out in future as we go forward for those decisions.
Okay, councillor Levery.
Thanks, Chair. A number that hit me was the 35 million on depots. And have we thought about other options with depots such as leasing? Rather than a huge capital expenditure to maintain, all right, a reduced number of depots, but still a significant sum of money? And has leasing option been considered? Thank you.
So as part of the business case work, we'll consider, we'll be considering everything. As it stands, we've got, the main focus of the depot review is our two big depots at Stanley for Throde and Manor Lane. We own both sites. So we expect at the moment, the business case will make most sense to probably to consolidate those two sites into one and invest in one of those sites. But clearly, we need to do the work to pop the finances out in terms of that and to really get clear as to what that costs. And then that will enable us then to look at whether a leasing arrangement might be a better arrangement for, you know, for the city. We need to set those options out, part of a decision in the business case, but we will do that.
Okay, councillor Chaplin.
No, I was just in, adding to what councillor Orton was saying. The options are really to release buildings that we have no use for, so that generates a capital receipt. Otherwise, you are looking at raiding revenue budgets. And I don't know about your group, but certainly last autumn, our group was having a lot of meetings, even used a Sunday on one occasion, to go through the budget to try and square the circle of still delivering services, but without inflicting too much pain on any one of those vital services that people depend on.
Yeah, Tom?
Just very briefly, so I think that's right. But one of the things that we will be doing through the locality buildings review in particular and the community buildings review in particular is looking at how we maximise usage of buildings. And whilst I totally agree that, you know, some of this is potentially going to rely on capital receipts and on us selling things in order to invest in other buildings, actually, one of the tricks here is to get more people into the buildings we have and co-locate and potentially even have partners co-locating and produce income to the council. So there is a, there's a kind of a complexity of financial options around this. If we get the review right and do the right things in terms of our decision making, the use of our assets. I think you're right, councillor Chaplin, some of this will require actually closing some buildings because we've got a huge number of buildings, a large number of which actually probably aren't fit for purpose anymore, probably aren't in the places where we need them to be. But on the financial side, there are some other options as well in terms of how we just sweat our assets, actually.
Yeah, I'd just add on there, I think it's right that we look at these things. As you're talking about in the buildings, out in the communities, you know, it's making sure we've got the right buildings. in the communities in the right places. They may not necessarily be our buildings going forward. Uh, but let's make sure we've got the the appropriate facilities out there in the communities. It's interesting. It's I remember bringing and councillor Lee, you were on. I'm just looking around. I'm not sure if there was anybody else in. We brought the last accommodation strategy that that delivered eight million in savings in the revenue budget when we moved into Morefoot. Uh, when we moved out of places like New Bank House, uh and other buildings round about. And it's it would seem to be going full circle again, but that was at that time, that was a proposal and that was the uh that that delivered eight million in savings for the council to the revenue budget. Uh, so, you know, I I think there is still a lot of work to be done out there, but we need to make the best of our assets and the best of our estates, as you as you're saying out there. So I think it's uh it's good and it's timely to see this report coming through. And I think it's it's sort of adding to the comments that the councillor Orton made there. It will allow us to have a look at some options and say, do we do A and B or do we do C or D? And and we need to get some firm decisions in there. Uh, I know there is the the capital approvals that that go through the corporate process that bring through. And then some capital approvals come to the Finance Committee, some come to the Strategy and Resources because of the way they 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 fit through there. But I think it's just having an understanding of where we make those decisions around things sooner. Uh, I think if you could take that back, Tommy, in in line with what councillor Orton said there. Thank you. So we have the recommendation there. Uh, are we all in agreement with the recommendation? Yeah, agreed. Thank you. Nobody against. So that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And that brings us on to item sixteen, page two hundred and twenty seven of the of the agenda. Uh, this report and appendices are exempt. So uh we'll we'll have to suspend the webcast for this. And then when we come back to when we we do make a decision on the recommendations, then we'll start the webcast again so that the the decision is in the public domain. Okay, thank you uh for that slight pause there pause there in the webcast. Uh, while we've we've discussed the report that was closed. colleagues, we face with the the recommendation on page two hundred and twenty eight. Uh, are we all in agreement with the recommendations? Agreed, yeah. Nobody disagrees. Okay, that's carried unanimously. Uh, thank you very much. And that brings us to the end of today's meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for your attendance. And look forward to the next one.